All right, thank you all for being here. We are going to start the meeting now. Unfortunately, well, Dr. Moniz couldn't make it. He's on a business trip, so won't be able to make it with us this evening. So I wanted to mention that. And I do have some comments from him that I'll mention later in the meeting. Mr. Hyman is on his way. There he is. Actually, he's walking in as we speak. So we have six of the seven here. So this is a public hearing. I'd like to call the public hearing to order now. We do have a quorum. And at this time, I'll just ask Ida Ambrose to go ahead and get us started. This is a public hearing to discuss the budget and the proposed tax rate for 2025-2026.
Thank you, Dr. Betis. Good evening, Mr. President, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Cortan, senior team, and members of the audience. Thank you so much for coming in tonight. We are hosting our public hearing for the purpose of discussing the budget and proposed tax rate for '25-'26. The public hearing is required prior to the board adopting the budget. So on our first page here, we have our estimated revenues and appropriations. And I am very pleased to announce that we are proposing to you tonight a balanced budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026. If we look at the third column there under revenue, those are our proposed revenue items for next school year. For Fund 199 under local maintenance, we're proposing a budget of $182.9 million. And if you look to the right, under the appropriations column, that is the amount that we are proposing for next school year. And you'll see there that is budgeted at $178.9 million. There is a difference there, $4 million. But if you look further down, under 162 athletics, our estimated revenues there is $405,000. And that's usually the norm. Our athletics program does, you know, generate ticket sales, but not enough to cover all of the expenditures that we have to pay all of our coaches and supplies and contracted services, right, for athletics. And so you'll see our budget for appropriations there at $4.4 million. And so that deficit there of $4 million is netted against the $4 million that we have already earmarked there in our general fund to combine the two costs there. And so that is in balance, that is budgeted correctly. And then if you look back up to 175 TRE on that second row, we do have an estimated revenue budget for next year of $10 million with a corresponding appropriations of $10 million. So overall, for our general funds, we are proposing a budget of $193.3 million. And then next, the next row there, you'll see Fund 101. And this is something that we have discussed, you know, in previous budget workshops and in our fiscal planning committee meetings. We are proposing for next year that our food service move out of the Fund 240 into Fund 101, which is representative of general funds. But by law, we do have to present to you for our budget, food service in its own line items. It has to be reported separately so that you can see the operations, revenue, and expenditures there. And so our food service budget for revenues is $20.3 million for next school year with the corresponding appropriations of $20.3 million. So again, a balanced budget there as well. And then lastly, we have our Fund 511, which is our interest in sinking. We are proposing a $9.2 million revenue budget for next school year with, again, a corresponding appropriations budget of $9.2 million. So in total, for the three funds that by law needs to be legally approved by our board before we start into the next school year is our local, our general funds, our food service, and our interest in sinking. So total funds there is a proposed budget of $222.9 million for next school year. So some factors impacting the budget. Here we have our estimated certified tax roll. It is at $5.7 billion. Again, this is an estimate because our true valuations do not come out until the month of July. And so in order to be able to calculate a budget, we have to come up with a calculated preliminary tax rate. And so based upon the estimates on our certified tax roll of $5.7 billion, which is an increase from last year of 12.83 percent, we have a tax, a proposed tax rate to be finalized and adopted in September of 90.61 cents. The collection rate that we are shooting for for next year for property taxes is 93 percent. And so if you remembered our last board meeting, our collection rate was at 93 point something percent, right? Point one, I think it was. And so we feel like that is probably the goal for next year, and hopefully a little bit higher that we can have for our tax collections rate. So again, our proposed tax rate is at .9061. The MNO is proposed preliminary at .7431. The INS portion of our tax rate remains the same of .163. And so this preliminary tax rate looks to be of a one cent decrease from last year's tax rate. So our student ADA that we are, that we used in preparing our budget for this year is $14,684. We are also utilizing enrollment of $16,337 as well. Another item that impacted our budget is we did have some savings in our property insurance for this coming school year. That savings is about $252,000. And then as we went through the fiscal year, this past fiscal year, we did a lot of staffing guideline adjustments. And so the overall savings there is about $4.9 million. And so that, of course, is a positive impact to our, for our budget for next school year. Other factors is the new House Bill 2 that we just received from the state on June the 4th. And so we have some new allotments from the state and also some increases to some of our allotments. So for instance, we have an increase to our basic allotment, and that increases $55 per enrollment. We also have a new enrollment called basic cost allotment, which everyone is referring to as ABC allotment, and that is about $106 per enrolled. And then we also have a teacher retention allotment, and that equates to about $4.8 million for this school year. Our support staff retention is estimated at $45 per ADA, which for our district equates out to $560,000 for next school year. And so the two, the teacher retention allotment and the support staff retention, when you see those items, that is referring to the $2,500 that we will be proposing in our compensation plan for our teachers that have three to four years' experience and the $5,000 increase to our, for our teachers that have five-plus years' experience. And then also, we have an increase to our school safety allotment of about $1.3 million for this coming school year. And so that's a significant increase from the $15,000 per campus that we received previously up to $33,530 for next school year. So before I jump into our proposed compensation plan for next school year, I do want to remind everybody that a lot of planning goes into preparing a proposed compensation plan for next year. We know that this is a BIENNium, the funding that we're receiving from the state. And so that BIENNium is for this next school year, for fiscal year '26 and for fiscal year '27. We do not know what state will bring up in fiscal year '28, and that would be a new BIENNium. And so just knowing what we know right now with this current legislature for this BIENNium, you know, we need to be fiscally responsible and offer a compensation plan that fits the budget, as well as continue to retain our staff at a very competitive rate with our surrounding school districts. We're planning for future possible pay increases, right? So that's why we want to make sure that we budget accordingly so that we're able to provide ourselves the opportunity to do so if we so wish next year. We also did several market studies on our surrounding districts to make sure that we are comparable and competitive with our surrounding districts. So here I have for you our proposed compensation plan for next school year. We are proposing raises for all of our staff members for next school year. For our teachers, we are proposing for our one-year teacher, teachers to have a $1,200 increase for next school year. For our teachers that have two years' experience, $1,400. And then again, the state is providing that retention allotment for our three-to-four-year teachers of 2,500 and our five-plus-years experience teachers at $5,000. We have increased the new starting teacher pay from $54,000 up to $55,000 for this year. So that's a $1,000 increase for our year zero teachers entering into our district. Next, we have an adjustment for our substitute pay. So we are proposing an increase to our substitutes for $85 per day for our non-degreed substitutes, $125 per day for our degreed staff, substitutes, I'm sorry, and then $145 for our certified substitute teachers. And then for our clerical and auxiliary pay increase, based upon the conversations that we had from our last budget workshop, you know, we heard the board, and they were interested in possibly providing a significant increase for our clerical and auxiliary staff, which are hourly employees. And so we went back to crunch the numbers, and we came back with a 4% of the midpoint increase for all of our hourly staff members. And so that would include all of our secretaries, our parent professionals, our food service employees, our bus drivers, our maintenance workers, custodians. That's a big group of employees that we have. From our clerical, that's about 500 employees, and our auxiliary staff, another 500 employees that we have employed at ACISD. For administration and other professionals, we are proposing an increase as well of 2.5 percent of their midpoint. Another monetary proposal is for our elementary bilingual stipend. Well, we are proposing a $200 increase to that stipend, so that would allow our bilingual teachers and our dual-language employees to earn possibly up to $1,200 as a bilingual stipend for next school year. Our food service department has submitted also an incentive for perfect attendance for their employees. And so that is at $400 that we are proposing for next school year. Our teachers and transportation service department already have a perfect attendance incentive, and so now we're going to include our food service staff for next school year. And then lastly, but not least, we are also proposing an additional French benefit, two French benefits for all of our staff. And one is our pre-K3 program. We are offering priority consideration for all staff members to be able to enroll their own children into the pre-K3 program, as well as giving them, giving all of our staff members priority consideration into the help program, which is our after-school care program here at the district. So do I have any questions on the proposed? Okay, very good. So then moving on, another big section of our budget for this coming school year is our TRE budget. And so here is a nice one-page summary of what we have planned for next school year for our '25-'26 TRE budget. You'll see here we have our two loan payments, one for 2018, the tax maintenance note from back then, and then our new tax maintenance note for 2025. So those two together is about $1.9 million of payments that we have set aside in the budget to make those payments. Property insurance is also included in our TRE budget because that helps maintain the, our buildings and all of our facilities here at the district, and that is proposed at $1.3 million for next school year. Safety and security projects are proposed at $400,000. HVAC maintenance, $497,000. Maintenance projects, we're estimating about $5.2 million for next school year. That would be inclusive of, you know, all of our buildings and facilities for anything that needs to be upgraded or improved at our district level. And then we also have $400,000 earmarked for building renovations. And lastly, we have some salaries for our construction manager and our draftsman here at the district that help oversee a lot of these different maintenance projects that we have at ACISD. So that complete budget is $10 million, which is the appropriations that we had proposed to you earlier. Next, we have our revenues. So on this page right here, we have a two-year estimated revenue comparison for our official budget. So again, our official budget includes our local, our food service, and our interest in sinking fund. And so if we look here at the very first column, that is our proposed budget for this coming school year. And if you look at the third column, you'll see that is the budget that was proposed to you last year for '24-'25. And then the last column there, you'll be able to see what the changes are, increase or decrease for, from last year's budget to this year's budget. So if we look here at our property taxes, we have proposed a $43.8 million. Prior year was at $50.6 million. You do see there that there's a decrease of $6.7 million, but I do want to clarify that that's representative of, you know, we, last year, we had an over, a line item that was overly budgeted for our property taxes. However, you know, when we do have lower property tax collections, the state brings in the differential, whatever that difference is. So you'll notice that in our state revenues, if you look in the middle of that page, there's a $143.3 million that we're proposing for next year's budget compared to the $127.2 million of last year's budget. So that, there's a huge increase of $16 million, of which that $6.7 million difference up in the top with property taxes is netted against that, the state revenues, right? So then moving back up to our co-curricular and enterprising activities, we're budgeting $864,500. That's about $5,500 more for this coming school year. Last year was the first year that we started charging for games at the middle school level, and so we did see an increase there in our athletic gate sales. This also is representative of our à la carte meal charges that our students have for buying those extra little snacks and iced coffees there at their campuses. And so our miscellaneous revenues, we do have budgeted $2.8 million for this coming school year. Last year was at $3.3 million. You will see there, there is a slight difference, a decrease there, $464,000. And that is because we are now estimating a lower amount from our interest income because of our cash investments, right? That balance there isn't as high as it used to be before in the past, it's a little lower. And so we're estimating that at a better amount for next school year. And so again, on our state revenues, I think I explained that, we have $143.3 million proposed for next year. That does also include the differential that we receive from the state for property taxes, as well as the new House Bill 2 new allotments. So that new revenue is going into that state revenue right there in the $143.3 million. Next, we have estimated revenues for TRS contributions. That is coming at $9.8 million for this coming school year. You will notice that that is an $800,000 increase, and that is because as we propose these pay increases for our, for our staff members, our TRS contribution is going to increase as well. And then our federal revenues, we are budgeting $22.1 million. This is a decrease of about $2 million from last year's $24 million budget. The majority of that decrease is due to the fact of all the different changes that has occurred at the state level for our SARS program. And so because of those changes in the state level, our revenues, and this is all school districts in the state of Texas, are seeing a 50% decrease in funding. And so we have decreased our budget as well to be in alignment for that actual, you know, expectation for next school year. And then at the bottom, you will see grand total for all sources, that that does total up to $222.9 million as our official budget amount.
Before you move on, Mr. President, can I, Ida, would you just take a minute and explain to those who may be listening what SARS funding covers?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. So our SARS is a Medicaid program that we have for services that we provide to our special education students. And so we have a list of providers, and in our district, in any school district in Texas that participate in SARS, providers include our special education teachers, you know, our bus monitors, our physical therapists, occupational therapists, anybody that's providing services to our special education students. And so in the program, our staff members that are involved with the program are trained, right? And they are, they know how to keep track of the time that they spend on their, on their students, whether it is, you know, redirecting the student, hand-over-hand instruction that we provide to their students, or the different type of occupational therapy that we provide to our students. And so based on the services, we provide what we call these tickets, and we submit that to the state for reimbursement for those services that we provide. And so, you know, unfortunately, the, in this past, this past school year, we noticed a lot of different changes at the state level that decreased the rates that we were used to before in the past.
Thank you.
This, I will note, though, that our services to our students will always continue for our special education students. That will definitely never, ever minimize or go away. We just, you know, will not have that, that funding that we were used to before. Okay, the next page I have our co-curricular and enterprising activities and miscellaneous revenues. And so just to give you a little bit more clarity as to what those two line items represent, you know, athletic revenues of $405,000, food service for our à la carte type charges, $743,000. The interest income for next school year, we're proposing $719,000. And then our help program, we're estimating at $530,000. And then we do have some other miscellaneous charges there that are representative of different items that we may have, like, you know, rental facilities, charges for, you know, replacing textbooks, technology devices, and things of that nature, or in that other category there. So that total right there is $3.7 million. And then for our property taxes, just to provide that breakdown on our property taxes, we're estimating $42.5 million coming in from our current property taxes, which is our MNO, part of the tax rate. And then our delinquent is proposed at $619,000 for next school year, and that delinquent is representative of the taxpayers that are, that haven't paid their taxes at the, at the time that they were due. And so they become then delinquent, and then we continue to, to collect from the delinquent as well. And then we also have a budget there of $711,000 for penalty and interest. So that total right there is $43.8 million. Next, we have our state revenues. You know, here's just a variety of state revenues that we receive from them and the different types that we receive, right? So you'll see some items here that we've always seen before in the past, like our regular block grant, you know, which is representative of our basic allotment, that's $77.3 million. That's the biggest part of the breakdown from our state revenues. And then you'll see other allocations there, like our special education allotment, that's at $18 million, current technologies at $12.3, state compensatory, $20 million. And then if you move down to our, our first new allotment of the basic cost allotment, that right there is $1.7 million. Again, that basic cost, which is the ABC allotment, that is to be used, earmarked already for us to use for like property insurance, utilities, and transportation expenses. And then we have our teacher retention allotment of $4.8 million, and that's a new one, and our support staff retention of $560,000. And then a couple of other new ones are also, that came in under our House Bill 2. We have a college preparation assessment reimbursement of $50,000 and a certification examination reimbursement, $57,000, that's estimated for next year. And then, and then lastly, we have our TRS on behalf of $9.8 million. And then moving into our federal revenues, these are the different types of federal revenues that we receive. The top six or seven of them are all representative under our food service, right? So we have our school breakfast program, $5.2 million, our national school lunch program of $9.9 million. We have donated commodities of 1.3. The supper program is at $1.6 million. And then we also have an after-school snack program as well from the child nutrition department of $78,000. There's a food and vegetables program of $250,000 as well. We also budgeted indirect costs for the general fund, that, and these are charges that we, that we apply from our other federal grants, like Fund 211, which is our Title I Part A, our migrant, our Fund 287, which is our, which is our grant that's on the other side of our ACE program. And so that is an application of about $600,000 that we're proposing for next year. And there you'll see our charge program, and so we are estimating $1.5 million for this coming year. In the past, that's always been around $3 million, and so this year, we're, we're making that adjustment for this year. Our Medicaid administrative claims is estimated at $75,000. And so if you participate in SARS program, you're highly encouraged to also participate in the MAC, that's what we call the MAC program. And so it's the same group of individuals, of our teachers that we, that we have, that participate in SARS, that are also eligible for our MAC program as well. And so that's an additional $75,000 for next school year. We have our E-rate reimbursement of $310,000. And then at the end there, you'll see a bond subsidy payment, and so that's estimated at $329,000. This ties back to the 2013 bond program that we have. And so we have this program set up with the IRS. We send in our Form 8038, and we're able to get that little bond subsidy to help us with our payment. So total, that is $22.1 million for federal revenues. And I've also provided a nice little picture graph so that you can see a nice visual of, you know, how do we, how do we fare with our estimated revenues? What sources is that coming in from? And so you'll see there that the majority of that, the $153 million, is from our state. And then our appropriations by fund. So here we have our general fund, our appropriations there is $178.9 million. Our TRE is budgeted at $10 million. Athletics is budgeted at $4.4. Food service, $20.3 million, and our interest in sinking at $9.2 million. So again, all of our appropriations that are budgeted for next year are at $222.9 million, the official budget amount that we're proposing. So if we break down our appropriations by the expenditure type, okay, so how are we breaking down that $222.9 million? 75% of that is proposed in our payroll. And so that is at $167.9 million for next school year. We have contracted services budgeted at $15.7 million, supplies and materials at $17.9 million, and other expenditures at $4.5 million. And then we also have a budget there for our debt service, which is $12.7 million, and our capital outlay of $3.9 million. And so you'll also see the different percentages that we have there. The highest is payroll, and then we also have 8.1% for supplies and materials. And then lastly, we wanted to provide to you a one-page of what our appropriations look like by function. And so I always try to explain this to everyone, like when we have our proposed budget approved by our school board, we are approving that by a function level. And so that's why whenever we make a change or we're moving, transferring funds from one function to a different function throughout the fiscal year, we bring that to you as a budget amendment. And so here, by function, you're able to see that we're proposing in our instruction line item, which is Function 11, $110.4 million for next school year. And so that makes up about 49.6% of our proposed budget for next year, you know, as it should be, because, you know, this is for all of our instructional services that we have, including our payroll, supplies, and contracted services. And then some other items here, function levels that we have, we have a Function 23 for our school leadership, and we're budgeting that at $12.3 million for next year. You'll see our food service again at the $20.3 million that we have already talked to you about. Our co-curricular and extracurricular activities, Function 36, that's budgeted at $8.9 million. Plant maintenance and operations is a Function 51, and that is at $20.3 million. And that's another large function line item that we have in next year's budget. And then we have our debt service of $12.7 million. And then down at the bottom, you have a small budget there of $30,000 for our JJ AEP, and that is for our students that are sent to, to our, our other facility that we have contracted with. And then the appraisal district is budgeted at $650,000. So those two dollar amounts haven't changed from last year at all. So those two dollar amounts haven't changed from last year at all. Okay. Appropriations by the state programs. So this is a one pager of how much we are appropriating for next year's budget for our different program intent codes. And so we have different programs in our district, like our bilingual education, we are budgeting one point one million dollars for next school year. Our career and technology program is at six point nine million dollars. College career and military readiness at one point one million dollars. We have dyslexia budgeted for four hundred and two thousand dollars for next school year. Early education, two point nine. Gifted and talented, one point six. Pre-K, four hundred and fifteen thousand. Special education, twenty-two point three million dollars. And our state compensatory of fifteen point four million dollars. And then I have also provided a nice picture graph of what our appropriations look like by the different object codes that we have. Payroll is in the gray area of seventy-five point three percent. And then we have our debt service of five point seven, other expenditures of two, two percent, and contracted services of seven point one. And then our supplies and materials are budgeted at eight, eight point one percent for next school year. And so here, I have a, a one pager of our entire official budget, which includes our general fund, our food service, and our debt service. So those three funds combined are representative in this Excel worksheet that we have here, based upon the function level. And then also at the top, you can see how it's broken down between payroll, contract services, supplies, and materials, operating expenditures, debt, service, capital outlay. And then the last two columns are representative of the total for this proposed budget compared to last year's proposed budget. And so you'll notice here at the bottom as well, those last two rows, the total, the first line item is the total for our proposed budget for this year, and then the last row is the last year's proposed budget. So at any given time, if you want to look at what our official budget is for payroll, just payroll, you can just look at this and it'll show one hundred and sixty-seven point nine million dollars. But if you want to see, okay, well, what is that representative of, let's say I want to look at health services, and that's Function Thirty-Three. So you'll look at thirty, Function Thirty-Three, go across the, the row there, and you'll see that that is proposed at two point four million dollars. And so that kind of gives you two different ways to look at your official budget by function level and also by the object class. And then the next three slides is just a breakdown of the three individual funds that we have combined that I just showed you. So up here first is our general fund. So again, same format, we have it broken down by function level, we also have it broken down by object class. You have the last two columns there that you can compare what the total is versus last year's budget. And then the last two rows there at the bottom provide what the totals are for this year compared to last year's numbers. And so this page is representative of just our general fund. And then next, we have our food service. And this was a lot simpler, right? Because we only have one function, pretty much, in our food service department, and that's a Function Thirty-Five. And so you'll see there what that breakdown is by payroll, contracted services, supplies, and other operating expenditures. There is a small amount there budgeted for Fifty-One, and that's for maintaining some of their kitchens, right? And again, same format, so you're able to, to see, you know, compare this budget for this year compared to last year's budget. And then lastly, we have our debt service fund, which is our Fund Five-Eleven. You know, this primarily, most of the budget is under Function Seventy-One, debt service. And so you'll see that we have budgeted nine point one million dollars for next year's bond payments. Our tax rate. So as I mentioned earlier, we have a preliminary proposed tax rate for you for, for this evening. We are looking at a total of point nine zero six one. This is based upon preliminary valuations. We will be bringing to you in September the final actual tax rate, and once we receive the final numbers from, from the state and the appraisal district. And just a comparison, you know, what that preliminary looks like to, to last year's, right? You'll, you'll see that there is that one penny difference. It's a decrease. This is a copy of the notice of public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rate. By law, we are required to post this in the newspaper ten days prior to having this public hearing to propose our budget and, and tax rate. And so this is a copy of what was published in our newspaper ten days ago. Supplementary information, this one pager gives us a recap of some of our other funds that we have included. This is not the official budget, but these are supplementary funds that we have, either in grants, right? We have our Title One Part A budgeted there, as well as our migrant program, our Title One Part D Prevention and Intervention Program. Two Twenty-Four, Two Twenty-Five are representative of our IDEA Part B, formula and preschool, which, you know, is for our special education students. We also have Fund Two Forty-Four for our career and technical students. And then we also have, down at the bottom, our ACE program, which is the Twenty-First Century Grant, Fund Two Sixty-Five, of one point six million dollars. Towards the bottom of that, you'll start to see we have a, a small budget there for our student activity, because even our campuses that have a student activity account, they have to submit a budget to us as well. And so that's seven hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars is what our campuses are estimating for fundraising for next school year. And we also have our health insurance fund in there as well. We have that proposed at seventeen million dollars, and our workers' comp of nine hundred thousand dollars. So these supplementary funds are at thirty-seven point six million dollars. And then lastly, the last page that we have here in our presentation for tonight, is that two-year estimated revenue comparison for all the funds. And so this encompasses all our supplementary funds along with our official budget. And so the same breakdown, right? You'll see our property taxes, our tuition and fees, co-curricular, miscellaneous. And so you'll see what our total for local sources is, which is budgeted at sixty-six point two million dollars. Our state revenues remain the same, a hundred and fifty-four point one million dollars. And then we also have our federal revenues, and that's where you'll see the increase there, because it includes some of our federal grants, of forty point one million dollars. So our complete proposed budget with all funds is at two hundred and sixty point five million dollars. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions or any comments or feedback that you may have for me.
Ida, thank you very much. Very comprehensive, and we appreciate all the documents in advance and how, and how the process of how we got here. I think it was a great process. We've had multiple meetings individually with you and Dr. Cortan, and we thank you for your, your time and attention, but, and the thoughtfulness and the detail, level of detail you put in preparing this year's budget. So I'll give a few comments and special thanks to the board. I, I think the board has really done a superb job of taking the time to understand where we are and preparing the best budget that we can for the next school year. I know each board member met multiple times with you and Dr. Cortan in person and sometimes in Zoom and other, and other modes of communication. So I, I want to thank all the board members, you know, including Dr. Moniz, who couldn't be here tonight. You know, Dr. Moniz shares his appreciation for all employees and has a confidence that this board will make the right decision. He sends his love and appreciation to all educators and employees of the district. He just couldn't be here tonight. But I also want to, want to again, give kudos to you, Dr. Cortan. You've done a great job of getting us to this point, working with the business office. It's been, you know, a lot of, a lot of meetings and that kind of stuff. And so just wanted to say, you know, ultimately, if this approve, if this board approves the budget, we do so out of, out of just, you know, love, appreciation, and respect of all of our employees. Incredible, from central office, you know, all the way down to every, every campus, of course, starting with our teachers, our, all of our transportation, our custodians, cafeteria workers, everybody. And so we just really appreciate everyone that, that, you know, that gives of themselves to inspire and to, and to, you know, lead our young ones on a path of success and achievement. And it's just amazing to, to go around these campuses and see the delightful learning environments that, that y'all create because of what y'all do and the oversight and support that y'all give here at Central Office so that they can do their jobs and be the best versions of themselves and show up for, for each one of our, our young ones and for their families as well. So we have an incredible school district, but it all, you know, it all goes back to our people, culture, and our strategy, right? And so getting it right for them is important. So just want to again, thank you again, Ida, for, for this great presentation. I might have one or two questions, but I will, we have plenty of time, guys. The, the, the special board meeting after this is, is pretty, going to be pretty quick. I think this is more important that we now take the time to go around and have each board member comments and questions, because this is a very important function that we do every year. So with that, I will sort of, kind of let the rest of the board sort of maybe ask their questions, dive in, make comments, whatever, whatever y'all choose to do. So this is still a public hearing, but welcome your comments and questions for Ida and Dr. Cortan as, as far as the approval of the budget is concerned. And one, you know, one thing I want to remind the board, although it definitely was proposed tonight, we obviously, as you all know, don't approve the tax rate until September. Definitely can talk about it, no problem, but you'll see it, you won't see it on the agenda tonight. That's done, that's done in September. So just want to, as a reminder, so with that, I'll defer to my colleagues. Anybody? Dr. Reineger.
Thank you. I, I first want to just echo the sentiment about how excited I am that we're proposing a budget that incre, that includes increases in salary across every level of our, of our district, because it's so well-deserved and so important to continue to recognize the, the work and the dedication of, of, you know, every single employee and their role in making this the greatest district to work for and for our children to be educated in. So I'm really excited about that and appreciate the work, the leadership to, to get us here. That's just terrific. And, and as well that our, our fund balance continues to increase. I mean, we're, we're just in a, in a, in the right place. So thank you for that. I have just, um, two minor questions, and they're, they're may, they may be a little in the weeds, and, and one of them actually may be something that we see in the future. In the dyslexia area, and I don't know if it's in that, in that function, or it might be somewhere else, and again, this is the one that might be in the future, we had, we've heard some, you know, amazing things that are happening, that, that's happening in terms of like the, the curriculum and the staff development, you know, kind of coming online in the future, which includes the ability to generate revenue, because we'll be a training center. I think I'm getting the, the right word there. And so would this budget include revenue around that training, training center? That's future.
That will be in the future. And we did speak about that at our monthly meetings, whenever we have the finances and planning committee meeting. I think that that's appropriate to bring that to you periodically, maybe quarterly as we get that going. But we did speak about that just because we want to make sure it's going to be a return on investment. And so studying the staffing around that, studying the model, and comparing expenditures and revenues are going to be important. But we'll be bringing that forward to you all.
Great, great. Thank you. And then one other question, and I know we have a, a benefits committee. And in that benefits committee, that's where we're, you know, kind of looking annually at like, what's the coverage, right? All of the various benefits. In, and so just as a kind of a, a clarifying question, this coming year, is there any co-pay changes being recommended that are in, in this budget? Or is it, we've already passed that and it's assuming?
We, we haven't yet, actually. We do that, we do have that coming up on, hopefully on July fifteenth. We are going to be scheduling our first employee benefits committee meeting for the fiscal year. And at that point, we will be bringing in our, our representative, Mr. Gibbs. And so Scott will be coming in here to, to give a presentation to the committee members. And then hopefully we will have that also included, either in a special board meeting or a regular board meeting for our approval of our health insurance plan for next school year.
And, and then this current budget, though, is based on what we're currently living in?
Based upon what we currently have, and then based upon the conversations that we've had with Scott, you know, we, we feel like it should be a very comparable plan for next year as well.
That's what I thought. Thank you so much for answering that.
Thank you, Doc. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Leal?
Mr. President, thank you. And so I just want to echo many of the comments that have been made. So much work has been put into the development of this budget. I'm thinking six, eight months ago, there were so many questions about what was going to happen with the legislature.
Yes.
You know, what are we going to be able to do for our team, for our people? And then all of that began clearing up, and, and that's, that's what we're seeing here today. So so much work to get it to this point. Thank you for everybody that's been involved, and to my colleagues and to the whole team that's put this together. It's, we have been hearing for, for a year, we've been hearing for a long time from the board that we wanted to do something for our people. And so here it is.
Yes.
And it's across the board. And, and it's so, so very much deserved by our team, teaching and educators, that's if you look on the list of the most highly respected professions, it's right there at the top.
Yes.
And so, and, and we, we're not doing it for the money, or our people aren't doing it for the money, but they're, but we're able to do something for them. And so that's, I think, just what, kudos for getting that done across the board. Some of this is coming out of district funds.
Yes.
It's not all being supported by the state. And that, and that doesn't happen without the belt tightening and the efficiencies and the hard work, the hard-won work that was done on Page Three, where you see just the, the savings that attributable to property insurance and staff, staffing guidelines. And so that's, that's, that's being redirected where it needs to be redirected.
Yes.
Thank you for getting that done. Again, I understand it's just the preliminary budget, but it's there and, and it's, it's in the plan. Another note that I made, and again, preliminary, but on Page Eight, I mean, we're talking about last year's property tax levy of fifty million, fifty point six million, decreasing. So local funds, funds from the community are decreasing right now over six million dollars. And so that's, that's help, that's real, that's, we're taking less from the community, the state is picking up some of that load.
Yes.
But I think that that's significant to note.
Yes, absolutely. And then, yeah, homestead exemption increasing from a hundred thousand to a hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's also in that calculation as well.
So as, I mean, we, you know, we, we take that seriously. The levy authority is, is, it's, it's real, and it's decreasing in a big way.
Yes.
So important to note. This is also preliminary, but the, the notice that we put out for a public meeting to, to discuss the budget, there's an important note here toward the bottom that where they, they estimate that there would be a, a real decrease in, in property tax payments. So right now, it's fifty dollars almost, forty-nine oh eight, that's a good number. And we'll try to, we'll try to seed that through.
Yes.
But the budget is a plan. You know, you don't know where you're going without a plan. I'm also very curious about this year's budget as we close out June and come into the, close out the year. I think, you know, we're going to be real pleased to see that we stuck to that.
Yes, yes.
And so we'll, we'll wait to see how that comes through, but, and we'll, and we'll try very hard to stick to this one. This is an aggressive budget. This is a tough budget. It's not an easy one, I think, for us to, to be able to, to keep up with. But, you know, we don't do things that are easy. We do things that are hard, and we wanted to reward our people. So, so thank you for that. And we look forward to seeing this continue to develop. I just had comments today, I don't have any questions, so.
Thank you.
Because you answered them all along the way, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. President?
I'm kind of like Ricky, I don't have questions, but just comments, I think. And, and thank you for bringing up, Ricky, the, the piece of the, the year-one teachers and the year-two teachers, those are coming from, from local. We, I know we wanted to make sure to get those teachers also covered, excuse me, in this compensation plan. I, I, I think back to about nine months ago, and where we were at, and I think we've all touched on it a little bit, but where we're at, and, and one of the priorities of this board was obviously to, to come to this point with a balanced budget like we do every year. But it was also very important for us to have this piece here, right?
Yes.
This compensation plan.
Yes.
And, and show our, our, our people an appreciation in this sense, right? I think someone mentioned it's, we don't do it for the money, but, you know, we have very passionate teachers, administrators, our auxiliary folks, our bus drivers, our custodial maintenance, our, our clerical, you know, very passionate people that show up to work every day because they love this school district, and they love this community, and they are part of this community, and, and they love our students more than anything. And, and it, it fills me with pride to be able to provide something to them considering where we were at nine months ago, right? And for that, I want to thank Dr. Cortan, you, Ms. Amriz, the, the staff here, the, of the senior team to come together and, and have that, you know, the leadership that you guys showcased throughout the year. And, and we're able to And, and were able to, you know, Ricky mentioned the tightening of the belts, you know, ma- make some sacrifices in areas and flex some muscles that we haven't had to flex in years past. To come out of this and to be able to provide this for, for our people who make the district what, what it is and, and the community what it is, i- is definitely a point of pride for us. And, and we're, we're happy to share this with them as soon as we do because it's, it's, they mean a lot to, to, to us. And, and I think that as, as we navigated throughout these past, through this, the school year, especially at the beginning of the school year, I felt like there was a lot of turbulence. And I think if any of us, most of us have flown, and you experience that turbulence, it can be scary, it can, it can lead to panic, it can lead to, to a lot of things. And, and nobody here panicked. Nobody here was scared, or maybe they were, but we didn't show it. Nobody panicked, you know, we just kept everybody, everything stayed in control. And I think a lot of that was because of our people. Our people were the pilot in that sense many times. And so we're very grateful to them, we're very grateful to the community for entrusting us and continuing to entrust us to do this work. This work is very important to our community.
Absolutely.
So thank you all for, for your work, to the senior team, to, to the administration. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I will.
Yes.
I think, I mean, I'm, I'm going to echo a lot of what, what my colleagues have said, but I just want to extend my thanks, Ida. You know, there's been a couple of words that I've heard resonated, you know, up here at the dais, and, and I think they're words that I have used in speaking with Dr. Corton as well. And, and it's very grateful for your, your leadership, you and your team, for your leadership and for being, for your calmness through all of this and answering our questions, you know, even though, you know, there were many at times, you know, for you to come back to us and, and for doing the hard work. And the hard work, not just by you, but I think of all of our departmental leadership that really had to come together and, and do a lot of that, really looking at, at things and seeing, you know, what are the things that are, are important to us. And I, and I really think at the end of the day, I hope that people see that, that the, the budget is a reflection of heart for people and that striving for excellence, right? I think those two things for me are, are embodied in the budget because there definitely is that striving for excellence and, and making sure that we can produce a balanced budget and that we're fiercely responsible. And, you know, I'll echo something that Mr. Leal said. I mean, I think the awesome thing is that we were able, even in these discussions about this budget, is to look forward and say, okay, what, what already do we need to start doing to make sure that we're moving things ahead? Because this, we, we're, we're better than we were, but we still have a lot of work to do, right?
Absolutely, yes.
So what can we do to continue to make sure that this isn't the end of, of where we're at in showing our people our appreciation for them? But I think this is doing it in a way that honors all of the, of our HCISD family that serves and supports our students, but it does it in a way that allows for us to be responsible in how we're rolling things out and plan for future.
Yes, absolutely.
And, and a future healthy state of our district and, and a way that we can continue to support our people. So very appreciative to you and to our, our superintendent because I think she has really helped us write, get us back on the right track.
Yes, yes.
With, with the support of the senior team and, and you and all of our departmental leadership. So very appreciative to you all and to our finance and planning committee because I, I think they have spent many hours making sure that the right questions are asked and that, and that we're, we're moving forward in the right direction. So appreciative to all of you.
Thank you.
Spato, anything?
I just wanted to close, I, as, as the newest board member, you, I very much appreciate the amount of time you and Dr. Corton spent answering my probably countless questions and getting into the weeds and making sure that I really understood the budget and the plan. And I'm, I'm just really impressed with the fact that after, and I, I, I think I'm echoing the sentiments of several of the, of the longer standing board members, that, that where we were nine months ago, a year ago, we're able to recognize 100% of the employees and their commitment to the students of this district. And that's a testament to, to this administration, the departmental leaders, but the, the, the thoughtfulness and the ability to, to be flexible in response to the, the questions that board members have and, and, and adjust based on that.
Right.
I very much appreciated that. And, and I appreciate the, the recognition for the incredible staff that HCISD has and, at every level.
Thank you so much, yes.
We definitely have a great staff here at Harlingen C I S D, and so we wanted to do them right tonight.
Awesome. Thank you very much. So I will, you know, just close by, by, by saying and reminding everyone that this is a living, breathing document. And so obviously, this goes back to, again, the appreciation we have for you, Dr. Corton, that we didn't, absent, you know, we didn't have this necessarily always in the past, at least that's how we got into this, you know, issue that we've been keep bringing up last year. But now, because of your leadership and the alignment, you know, from you, the business office, the senior team, every campus, all our executive directors, all our principals that have the commitment of now that operationally, this is yet another, right? Of course, the, the, the instruction and the, you know, academics, athletics, the arts, all these kinds of things are, are critical to the operational work that you all do, you know, throughout the district. But, but one of them is also making sure that we adhere to a balanced budget, making sure we color within the lines, making sure that we adjust the budget for actual revenues and, and enrollment as we go. And, and so that's why it's a living, breathing document. We're, we're making sure that we're coloring within the lines and, and spending, you know, the money that we actually have. And, and making sure that we're adjusting the budget as we go. That's responsible, you know, leadership, and that's, and that's, and that's responsible to the taxpayers and to the community. So I thank you for, for that because you really set the tone at the top. And it's so appreciated by this board, and you've earned our, our trust immensely. Thankfully, we do have, you know, the, the monthly, you know, you know, planning, I'm sorry, the finance and planning committees now. I think that was a brilliant idea. In fact, it was, it was that very idea that Greg and I sort of had that, 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 you know, and, and ran it by the board, everybody loved it, and said, my gosh, this is a really, really great idea. And it, but for that, we, we wouldn't have, you know, uncovered these issues. And so really, I think the Lord works in mysterious ways, but I'll tell you this, I love where we're at now. As a team, as a board, as a team of eight, leadership starting with you, Dr. Corton, I love where we're at. And, you know, somebody mentioned it before, but I mean, we're now going to catapult to much higher. The train's back on, on track and it's picking up a lot of steam, a lot of momentum. And I love how we're starting it off with, with, with love and support to our, all of our employees and the district. And so thankful to our state leaders for, for, obviously for the, you know, somewhat historic amount of investment in public, in public schools, we're thankful to our state leaders. But, but then we are also, because of the tightening of the budget and all the things that you've been doing with, with, with the business office, in a position to put more money in to invest in our, in our people. So thank you, thank you, thank you. We're in great shape. We're going to catapult to, you know, high, high levels. And I can't, I mean, I, I think we're on a trajectory to create the, the model school district in Texas, thanks to, to the great people that we have. So, so thank you, everyone. So with that, we can, we can leave the, the cameras rolling. I'm just going to adjourn the, the public, I'm sorry, the public hearing at this time. And we're going to jump straight into the special board meeting of Harlingen C I S D Board of Trustees. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum at this time. If you'll please join me in a moment of silence. And at this time, if you'll, so a little birdie told me that it's, we have a birthday today with Dalia Garcia, so let's wish her a happy birthday. And, you know, I don't know if this is a, a present, well, we have some cake for you back there, but, but maybe a partial gift. Would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Dalia, on your birthday.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, do we have any public comments for agenda topics?
Mr. President, there are no questions for public comments for agenda topics.
Okay, thank you so much. At this time, we'll move to the next item, consideration for approval of the MOU buy-in between West Ed and Harlingen C I S D. Dr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President, Superintendent, members of the board. Tonight, we bring you a memorandum of understanding between West Ed and Harlingen C I S D. We're excited to propose this memorandum of, of understanding for your approval because it provides targeted intervention support for eighth grade student. This is actually a grant-funded research program through the U.S. Department of Education, and they've partnered up with West Ed and Collaborative Classroom. Both those institutions have a proven record of success, and they have a very, very high rating on the, on the, on the What Works rating system that's provided by the U.S. Department of Ed. So we're excited to propose a collaborative because we have three schools, three middle schools that are willing to participate in this study. No, no school was told that they had to participate. We simply presented the information to them and let them know the benefits. The benefits are that teachers receive some additional pay, they get some, they get some pretty neat intensive coaching that they can take with them well after the grant's over. And, and like I said, West Ed has a history of, of rigorous support that's research-based and backed by research. The only thing different about this study is that West Ed and Collaborative Classroom have combined their efforts to make an eighth grade reading intervention program for our struggling readers. And so with that, with that reading intervention program, we'll be able to help students within our RTE periods here in the middle school. So principals are excited to participate, so are we. I think we're going to see added benefit to the teachers, both in terms of training and compensation, and added benefit to the kids because we're not, we're not modifying the core curriculum, we're, we're simply supplementing it, so.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Any questions for Dr. Reyes?
One question, Mr. President.
Yes.
Have we worked with West Ed before in the past?
We have. We've worked with Dr. Mickel before, be it change. And, and this time, we, we're still working with Dr. Mickel, but it's more of a, through the U.S. Department of Education, servicing through West Ed. And they're the ones, they're the ones really servicing the, the partnership agreement. But yes, we have worked with him before.
Thank you.
How, is this a, oh, how long is the agreement for?
So it's actually two control groups, right? There's, there's going to be students in the, well, there's going to be two schools or one school in the early group and one school in the late group, and they're going to compare treatment plans and see what the difference is between the control group and the group that's, that's being serviced through West Ed. We don't know which of our schools is going to be the late group and which school is going to be the starting group. But, but we do know that we do have a, a history and a track record of West Ed being very effective according to the U.S. Department of Ed.
I'm just interested, is, is this something maybe in our transforming teaching and learning we can hear kind of how this kind of works out for us or what, what we learned from this study?
I think it'd be a great study, especially when we, because we, we have our regular intervention programs, right? So it's not like any student's not going to be receiving interventions.
Right.
It's just we're going to have a select group of students that are going to be receiving these specialized interventions, and then we'll be able to, we'll be able to compare the outcomes of those students. But regardless, they still gain their high-quality instructional materials and, and instruction through their core content classes. So we're not, we're not touching that. It's the supplementary instruction that we're touching.
May I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
On, and it, to whomever, the, you, you mentioned that it doesn't, like that the intervention group, it doesn't compete, it doesn't change what they're learning, like it, we, it aligns. I guess I'm, you know, struggling readers, you know, makes you think of like some of the work we're doing around dyslexia and things like that. And so it's like, we don't want to confuse kids by adding different content, so.
I'm glad you brought that up, Dr. Reiner. We're not going to be selecting students that are already receiving services through like bilingual education or special services education. We're just going to be selecting students that are getting regular tier-two support.
Got it.
And that way, we're not, we're not, we're not touching that and intermingling that.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, this is a action item. How does the board wish to proceed?
Mr. President, motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between West Ed and Harlingen C I S D as proposed.
I'll second.
Motion of Mr. Leal, second by Mrs. Beato. Any further questions? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. At this time, we'll move to the next item, consideration and approval for the HCISD compensation plan for 2025, 2026. Mrs. Ambriz.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members, Superintendent Dr. Corton, senior team and members of the audience. As presented to you earlier in our public hearing, we are asking for your consideration and approval of the HCISD compensation plan for 2025 and 2026.
Mr. President, I'd like to move approval for the HCISD compensation plan for 2025, 2026.
Approval, Dr. Reiner, second by Dr. Monreal. Any further comments or questions? Just want to, again, thank incredible work of the business office and you, especially Ida and Dr. Corton for coming up with this and, and the board, because I think there was a lot of input from the board that really kind of helped. This was a process. The board was intimately involved and individually met with y'all several times, and I want to thank each of y'all again for doing that. Each of y'all made a really big difference in, in how we got to where we are. And this is a comprehensive compensation plan where everyone, you know, you know, gets something. So I really, really, you know, again, the state legislature did, did a lot, but we also are doing our part, and, and this is how we got here. So, so thank you all for that. So we have a motion and a second. We'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those named, passes unanimously. Thank you all so much. And now we'll proceed to the next item, consideration and approval of Harlingen C I S D 2025, 2026 budget. Mrs. Ambriz.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members, Superintendent Dr. Corton, senior team and members of the audience. As presented to you in our public meeting, we have presented to you our budget, a balanced budget for 2025, 2026, whereas our, our general fund is set at 193.3 million dollars, our food service budget, 20.3 million dollars, and our debt service budget of 9.2 million dollars. All steps have been taken to comply with the truth and taxation requirements. The administration recommends the board to consider to approve our budget as presented.
I'll move to approve the 2025, 2026 balanced budget as presented.
Second.
Motion for Dr. Monreal, second by Mr. Heimis. Any further questions, comments? We'll now proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those named, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Congratulations. And again, job well done. I think, Dr. Corton, you might have some comments?
I just want to say a huge thank you. Thank you to our board for supporting all of this. Proud that we are presenting a balanced budget, particularly this year. I just want to say a couple of things about the compensation plan because I have told people, several groups, as I go around the district and the community, that I love my jewelry and I love all those accessories. But the most important accessory I put on every day is my lapel pin because it's a reminder of those that I serve. And I have gained such a much deeper appreciation for the strength of this organization, cannot thank everybody enough because the reality is that we had to unite and make our way through this year fiscal, with a lot of fiscal responsibility. And it took every single employee and all of us at this table. So I just want to say a huge thank you to our board for approving this. And certainly, I would be remiss if I didn't say a huge thank you to Mrs. Ambriz. She has answered a million questions probably throughout the course of the year. She has answered a million questions probably throughout the course of the year. However, that just helps for us to be more calibrated around the, the organization and just a, a much better educated organization around finances. So, huge thank you to Ida. I'm incredibly proud of the work that she's done, and certainly thank you to our board.
Wonderful. Thank you, Doc. At this time, with the next item, consideration and approval of budget amendments. Mrs. Ambriz.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members, Superintendent Dr. Corton, senior team, and members of the audience. Let me pull that out, because I didn't see that. I must have skipped a page. So, we do have one budget amendment for you tonight, and this budget amendment is just for us to, as we take a final look at our budget to actual, make sure that we're going to be aligned with our, our budget per function level. And so, our recommendation for, for you tonight is to please approve our final budget amendment for this fiscal year.
Any questions?
Mr. President, motion to approve the budget amendment as proposed.
Motion by Mr. Leal. We have a second. Second by Mr. Heimis. And no further questions, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say aye, motion passes. Thank you so much. This time, we'll move to consideration and approval of interlocal agreement with the City of Harlingen for the S R O program for the 2025, 2026 school year. Mrs. Ambriz.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members, Superintendent Dr. Corton, senior team, and members of the audience. So, tonight, we are presenting to you the, the contract, our MOU contract, with the City of Harlingen for our School Resource Officer Program, or as we like to call the S R O program. This is the first extension of three possible extensions that we can consider for this contract, and here in your packet, you should have a copy of what was approved back in February 2024. There have been no changes to this contract, everything stays the same. Administration recommends approval of the interlocal agreement as presented to you tonight.
I'll move to approve the interlocal agreement as presented.
Second.
Motion for Dr. Monreal, second by Dr. Reiner. Any questions, comments? Here in all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who say aye, passes unanimously. Before we adjourn to closed executive session, we do have a couple items in closed session, I do want to take this moment, I think she probably thought she was going to escape without fanfare, but tonight is Denise's last meeting with us, so Denise, we're not going to make you do any performance or sing for us or anything like that. We actually have something for you, and we would love to give this to you and take a picture with you. We also have some cake for you back there as well, so, I hope you guys will join me. We, we can't thank you enough, Denise, for helping Dr. Corton herd all the cats, so to speak, and, and keep this board in line and keep us in, in the boat, rowing in the same direction. You guys do a great job of really helping organize everything for us and do remarkable job at, at really, you know, making the meetings and the schedule, go and making sure everything's on our calendar and things like that, and I'm, it's remarkable how oftentimes we have all seven board members at every meeting, and it's rare that we actually have somebody that's, you know, that has something scheduled, and it's usually, it's usually a special meeting like this that was just off, off a regular calendar cycle, but it's because you guys help us stay so organized. So, Denise, you've been amazing to work with. We're going to miss you, but I know someone's going to miss you a lot more over here, but thankfully, we have Carrie. Thank you for, for, for you. We, we promise we won't, we'll be nice to you, and we try not to drive you crazy, but, but, welcome, Carrie, we're, you know, we're, we're going to really appreciate what you do for us as well. So, Denise, will you take a picture with us? We'd love, we have this. Get free. Thank you.
Denise. Thank you. Thank you all, everybody. I appreciate it. I just appreciate everyone, because I always see that the decisions come from one, and it means the most to me as a parent who has kids in the industry, and as a member of the community, and as an employee of the district, so thank you.
Great job.
I just appreciate everyone, because I always see that the decisions come from one, and it means the most to me as a parent who has kids in the industry, and as a member of the community, and as an employee of the district, so thank you.
Great job.
I just appreciate it. I just appreciate everyone, because I always see that the decisions come from one, and it means the most to me as a parent who has kids in the industry, and as a member of the community, and as an employee of the district, so thank you.
Great job.
I just appreciate it. I just appreciate everyone, because I always see that the decisions come from one, and it means the most to me as a parent who has kids in the industry, and as a member of the community, and as an employee of the district, so thank you.
Great job.
I just appreciate it. I just appreciate everyone, because I always see that the decisions come from one, and it means the most to me as a parent who has kids in the industry, and as a member of the community, and as an employee of the district, so thank you.
Great job.
I just appreciate it. I just appreciate everyone, because I always see that the decisions come from one, and it means the most to me as a parent who has kids in the industry, and as a member of the community, and as an employee of the district, so thank you.
Thank you. What's that?
Yeah, we will miss her terribly.
We'll miss her, yeah, we'll miss you terribly, for sure. And Denise, don't forget to join us back in executive session for a little, little sweet, some little cake we have for you, so.
Sorry.
At this time, we'll adjourn to closer executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 072, 074, 082, Open Meetings Act for the following purposes: Discuss discussions regarding personnel matters, including district teachers, administrators, and other certified employees; discuss employment of teachers and other professional staff; and discuss employment of Assistant Superintendent for community engagement and strategic partnerships. We're now in executive session.
All right, thank you. We are now back in open session at a time of 7:46 PM. At this time, we have one item, consideration of approval of employment of teachers and other professional staff. How's the board wish to proceed?
I move that we approve the employment of teachers and other professional staff as presented in executive session.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Muriel, a second by trustee Beato. Sorry you allow the... Get for the second there. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
If his name is motion passes unanimously. And for item 8B, we are actually taking no action on this item at this time.